Call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Amen. Johnson.
Here.
Docken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll remove. I have a couple of additions I'd like to make, and one of those would be to the -- to remove the -- what have I got? I can't read my own writing.[102.29][102.29](Laughter).
The only addition that I'm aware of is, I believe, Mr. Gash is here to introduce Mr. Hump as the utility general manager.
We do that, we move that to right behind, or next on the agenda, and if you would do that, Mr. Gash.
Great.
You can do that already.
Mr. Mayor, councilmen, citizens, I'm here tonight to introduce our new general manager for the Wilmer Municipal Utilities. It's been a long summer and fall, so to say, starting up here to get this all done. It was done with a lot of hard work from our labor committee and the community. We had 23 applicants for this job. The labor committee cut it down to six, interviewed them, and ended up with three. One of those left, and the finals were Wes Hump and another gentleman from Minnesota here. We interviewed him, the commissioner interviewed him, and also we had a panel from Wilmer here, the local leaders, Charlene Stevens, Ken Warner, Pat Soled, and Dale Husstead helped us all out, and we're all in agreement that Wes is the man we want to have. Wes has experience, he knows what's going on here in Wilmer, he's got 22 years of experience, the transition that we're going through in these times with an electrical business. He's fully educated on that and knows just what's going on here in Wilmer. Let's see, let's see. He's approval employee of the utility, just has just done his job always, and this is a really good step forward for the utility. There's the transparency of this choice with the community, we're very happy with it. So I'd like to have you meet Wes, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.[241.12][241.12](Applause).
Thank you. Appreciate all those kind words, Jerry. Yes, it has been a long process. Hopefully, it's been transparent enough for everybody to be able to involve that wanted to be. I really want to thank the city council, the city staff, and everybody in Wilmer who were so supportive and helping through this whole process. It wasn't easy, but I'm glad we're done with it, and I'd like to move forward. And moving forward, I know that we have quite a few things to do. You folks will be seeing stuff come through with our commission minutes, quite a few changes. People are retiring, we're getting new people on board. In fact, we hired somebody today already to replace Larry. And I just wanted to say that appreciate your support, and I'll be moving forward as fast as I can, and hopefully in the right directions. If you have any questions, I'm open to them right now.
Do I hear any questions, Ms. Council?
All right. Well, thank you very much.[310.14][310.14](Applause).
Mayor?
I'd just like to take a moment to thank the commission and for all the hard work and dedication they did through this whole process of replacing the general manager. I know there's some very difficult times, and you guys worked very hard and diligently at it. Just like to thank you for all that extra hard work you put in for that.
Thank you, councilman. Any further discussion, comments?
Thank you again. Appreciate it. Thank you, Jerry.
At this particular time, we'll move into the scheduled hearings. Kevin, would you like to explain to the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I'm sorry. We have to approve the consent agenda. A motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Now we'll move into the special, or the scheduled hearings. Kevin, if you want to address that?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, you have before you on your executive summary a list of parcels, property owners and addresses and dollar amounts that were incurred mowing those properties from August 1, 2011 through July 31, 2012. Near 100 percent of these, I don't know exactly, are done by contracting with an agent who has mowed the property. We have billed these people, owner of record, and have not been paid as to date. It is the intention tonight to take testimony from any of the owners that are here. Subsequent to hearing, reasons why they shouldn't be assessed, the council should take action to assess the properties by adopting a resolution, and they will be collected in the property tax payment of 2013. And that needs to be certified with the county auditor. So tonight, Mr. Mayor, you open the hearing and take testimony, and I guess the easiest way is to go down and call out address by address.
Okay. With that, I will open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to or against? Would you come up to the podium, please, and identify yourself?
Thank you, Mayor Yanish and city council. I think the only one I don't hear, no here is Charlene, welcome to Wilmer. I received a letter for 609 Litchfield Avenue Southeast, and when I first got it, I thought it must be a mistake, because I don't know where 609 Litchfield Avenue Southeast was. But it's the old Highway 12 motel that I purchased in November of 2011. I used Jeff Danielson to do the closing, I bought the property from fence to real estate. We paid anything that was due on it at the time that we purchased the property, and then I get this letter saying that I owe $133.89. I'm not saying that somebody owes it, I'm just saying I don't think I owe it. I didn't own the property when they mowed it, I understand that, and part of the problem is I don't know the process. But I think the process is, is that you bill from July till August, and it just fell in a time when a closing took place in between, which probably not is, is probably not real common. But I don't feel like I should be the brunt of the $133 fine for something that I should have got a letter from and said, "Thanks for cleaning up that lot, it sure looks better."[556.88][556.88](Laughter) So that's not the letter I got. I got a letter that says, "I owe money for a time when I didn't own a piece of property," and that's what I think is unfair.
Thank you very much. Kevin, how shall we address that?
That's a very common complaint. In this case, it was mowed August, the notice to mow the lawn was sent August 20 to 2011. The process, of course, is to wait. We notice about two choices. One goes out normal mail for one stamp, and the other goes out certified mail. I believe that costs us $6.50. In this case, both those letters came back UTF by the post office, unable to forward. And so the previous owners, as you know from the hoteler, William and Betty Nelson, were not there. Why they didn't leave a forwarding address, I don't know, but just on the legal process, we notified the owner of record at the time of the nuisance that was to be abated. We hear this common complaint at all because we don't certify these monthly. I mean, if you did this monthly, you'd catch everybody, but as a general statement, it's the same thing with the utilities. The utilities will come over here at the end of October, and we certify them for collection by November 1, the requirement date. The realtors and the closing people are supposed to call both places, call for the utilities to find out, any call for City Hall to see if there's any mowing, or snow removal, or garbage removal. And sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't, but those claims are always against the property that it was mowed, so.
So what action do we need to take to see?
Well, when we're done taking all testimony from anybody else that may be here, you can make those decisions. As a general statement, you haven't been forgiving any of those, even though his facts are true. It's always a timing issue. But you can take all testimony. The end of the night is a resolution to certify for collection the properties that you want to certify.
Or an exception.
You can accept them all and mow for free. It's in your court.
That's not what I'm asking for. What I'm asking for is fairness. On our closing statement, we did call the utility company, we did call the water company, we called everybody. We called the fire marshal, because there had been a fire there. So we took the process that we knew best and made every phone call to find out what was outstanding against it, because it's not the first property I bought. So we did what we thought was the proper process, and to know that you've got a mowing bill that's not going to be billed for another 11 months, to me, doesn't seem, first of all, I didn't own it at the time, so to just pass it on to a property tax owner that bought it, to me, isn't, I can't do that in my business. So I mean, I don't know how, and I don't think if I bought a pair of tires and you billed the guy that bought the car from me, that you could pass that bill on to him. I think that the bill should go to the people that owned it at the time. The property I bought was listed with a very reputable firm in Wilmer, that it was public knowledge. If there was a bill sent out, it could have gone to Doug Finstra, and you could have said, "Doug, before you close this property, we've got to get paid." That's all I'm saying. I'm just saying, I don't think it's my bill, and that's the only reason I'm here. It's not the amount, this is a good dinner, it's the principle.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there any further discussion, or anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Did you want to speak at this public hearing, Matt?
I believe the gentleman in the back, do you have a question that you?
No, that's a different matter.
Okay. We will close the public hearing. Turn it over to the council for discussion. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, I want to understand this. At a closing, you know, somehow the closing agent gathers all the outstanding bills, and whether they're assessments or whatever they are, were we not able to tell them that this was outstanding because of our system? Or why were they not made aware if they in fact called?
Well, I'm not so certain they made our call to our office, and I don't think Bill even said that. They made all, they made the calls that they thought were reasonable. The owner of record at the time certainly was notified, or our attempts to notify them, you know, immediately in August of 2011. So subsequent to that, we take no action except for, I'm not certain what the finance director can answer, probably three monthly bills before we terminate. We don't bill 12 months until we get to this point, so those bills would go out and then terminate after that, and we just wait annually to certify for collection. And, well, a lot of them are the same way, because a lot of them are foreclosures, and you can see the Federal National Mortgage, various properties, Deutsche Bank. So that may happen a lot. We deal with misses and closings all the time. As you know, we're currently dealing with two unpaid senior citizen deferments, and they were clearly recorded against the property and yet missed by the closing companies. And so whether the phone calls are made or not made, generally when we call, we catch them and so forth, and, not that we can't make errors, because we scan a long list, and the list is getting ever so long, but most likely we wouldn't, and that happens. But they all sit, all these properties will sit and do this annually.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? I have a question. Who's responsible for the collection? I mean, is it?
Well, it's a standard billing process, and in failure to pay, there are certain things that you can collect by special assessments against the property, but that has to be in an ordinance, so we can do that for weed and grass mowing, snow removal, garbage collection. We can't do other bills that are outstanding.
Thank you. Director Okens, did you want to, did you have a point to make, or I saw you reaching for your microphone?
Only if there's a question, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evidently, the Nelsons can't be reached, we don't know where they're at, and technically, we can't bill them right now, is that correct? Because they don't own the property presently? And if we did bill them, our chances of collecting would be?
I'd say zero. There's no clout when there's no property anymore.
Typically, though, typically, the selling agents are aware of these things, correct?
We get calls all the time.
But we did not get one for this property.
I can't say that. It's been too long ago. This would have transpired, well, we quit billing, of course, early on in August, so in September, October of 2011, we're done with it, so it'll sit on the open invoice roster. Whether the call comes and it could have been missed by staff, or the call never came, we don't document that. We never document, at this point anyway, incoming calls from closing companies or abstract companies and so forth, just don't do it.
Is there something in our process that could be changed to further make sure these things don't happen, or is it just, it's going to happen once?
The volume of sales that we don't know about, I mean, this is a rare case where we had the firefighters over there, or maybe even using it, I can't remember, and boarding it up and so forth, but the bottom line is, we wouldn't be chasing potential sales. They're going to have to come to us with the volume that's out there.
Okay. Well, I do want to thank Mr. Graves for cleaning up the lot. It was a mess until he cleaned it up. Appreciate it. And I don't know what to do from here. I mean, like you said, it's not the amount, it's the principle of the process, that something failed along the way here, and how to fix that.
Any further discussion? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, so in other words, these closing agents, I haven't done a real estate closing in years, I mean, over 20, so, but it seems to me, we used to request certificates and assessment certificate, which we would pay for, or, you know, that's what would be obtained and paid for, and it would indicate all outstanding assessments and pending assessments that hadn't yet been certified, but I take it that's no longer done, or?
Well, it's still done occasionally. That will certify known assessments. They will discuss, if the timing is wrong, pending street assessments, if we are somewhat like in March or April, and we've already decided to build a certain street, we'll just tell them about it, but that won't be on that certified assessment. And utilities don't go on that, and really, I don't think we're doing weed and grass. I think there's a statement on there that you need to call a different department to find out if there's weed and grass or snow removal bills.
But as I understand it, it's done by phone call, that wouldn't be included in a formal written process?
We have no formal process for calling up our office to check on all those invoices, nor formal for the utilities. I believe they just call over here and find out if there's anything pending.
And once the call's made, and then it's not recorded, it's just forgotten about, as far as any manual recording of it being made, that somebody called, okay?
Yeah, that is correct. And whether we found it and told them, or told them the wrong amount, you know, there's always some human error in there, but in this case, I'm not sure if that was any human error. That's our normal process. We're waiting for the incoming call to say that these are here.
Thank you.
Councilman DeBleek, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, a city attorney, as far as his opinion on being able to assess a property that was, for an assessment that occurred under somebody else's ownership.
Mayor and councilmember DeBleek, generally speaking, and I'm not necessarily rendering an opinion on this case, because I've only just listened to what's transpired in the public hearing. Generally speaking, though, the city has an ordinance in place where it's able to assess for these unpaid charges, for services it has rendered, as it has in this case, and it has independent statutory authority to do that as well. So I think it is incumbent upon anyone purchasing property to make the proper inquiries, and in that case, in this case, I think it should have, or in any case in the city, those inquiries should be made to the city. So as a matter of, well, the way these work is, the assessment is against the property, it runs with the land, so it is clearly legal to impose this assessment. The exception might be if there is some error in the process made by the city, but I don't know that that's been established at all by the public testimony so far.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution certifying the amount as outlined.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution certifying the amount of the unpaid weed, grass, mowing charges to the county auditor for collection in 2013. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Would you care to talk to us about the snow removal?
This is garbage, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Yanish, members of the council, you have before you a list of two, which we are going to change to one, for abating the garbage nuisance on private property. This owner, which I am going to have you strike out, the first one, LA Edge Properties LLC, has paid in full, and the other one is a house that was fire damaged and razed about a month ago. But in any case, the garbage nuisance was abated, the cost is listed there at $379.26. The bill was sent to the owner of record to cover the cost of those services. No payment has been received. Subsequent to any comments from the public testimony tonight, stat's recommendation that we adopt the resolution certifying that amount against what is now a bare lot property.
I will now open the public hearing for discussion, if there's anyone here to speak to or for or against that. Close the public hearing, open the discussion for the council.
I would move to.
I would, I'd move to adopt the resolution certifying the amount of unpaid garbage removal to the county auditor for collection in 2013.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution certifying the amount of unpaid garbage removal charges to the county auditor for collection in 2013. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Next, we have the presentation for the Heart Safety City, Safe Cities designation, Mr. Brad Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, I, Brad Hanson, manager of the Wilmer Ambulance Service, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and talk to you about the designation of a heart safe community for the city of Wilmer. This has been an ongoing project that we've worked on with our, some other departments within the city, the fire department, the Candywood County DFIB Coalition, which also makes up some members of the city, affiliated medical centers, the hospital in Ridgewater College. Tonight, I bring with me Carrie Youngberg, who is our CPR coordinator for the hospital and the ambulance service, and Wendy Alpert, who is the chief nursing officer for the hospital, and June Boy, who is the director of emergency services and critical care services at the hospital, and then Bill Snoke, who, I guess I'll have him introduce himself, as he's going to be the one that actually gives us the plaque tonight as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, it's a privilege to be here. Brad and I have worked together for a number of years. I also have the distinction of having had Brad as a student of mine in a public safety administration certificate program that Brad pursued to advance his professional development. But tonight, we're here to celebrate the Heart Safe Community. And Heart Safe Communities were, the designation was developed to promote the early intervention in cardiac arrest. Cardiac arrest is one of those medical emergencies that is truly time sensitive. The human heart is a muscle, and we talk in health care about time is muscle when a person suffers a cardiac arrest. So having early intervention in response to a cardiac arrest is critical to that patient's survival. So the Heart Safe Community Program was developed to promote the awareness in the community of sudden cardiac arrest, and to designate communities that have taken very proactive and definitive steps to develop the response system to deal with those.
The Heart Safe Community Program supports the American Heart Association's Chain of Survival. So that's early access by calling 911, early CPR by doing training sessions with the citizens and the staff of the city, early defibrillation, advanced life support care, and post-cardiac arrest care. So the process is that our ambulance service and some of the other services in the county have taken on to make sure that when we have a cardiac arrest event, that the patient's being taken care of very quickly, and they have the most advanced care that they can get, and then potentially being transported on to a higher level of care to receive the treatment that they need to be able to come back to, hopefully, a normal life after our Part of the other process with the DFIB Coalition and the work that we do is to assist businesses, churches with CPR training and AED placements. So the DFIB Coalition has been around for many years through the county, working with the city as well, and as you know, getting AEDs placed throughout the community. So we've worked with utilities, we've worked with the Senior Citizen Center when it was in place, and also getting AEDs placed throughout some of the city office buildings in Wilmer, as well as the work that's being done throughout the county. All the county parks, a lot of the churches in the area also receive AEDs through work that we've done to help either promote the need for it, do the training for it, either assist them in finding dollars to help purchase them, and/or doing even things like brat feeds to help raise dollars to help buy these AEDs, or automatic external defibrillators for these places. So we were committed to heart health, safety, and emergency response to this Heart Safe Community process. So what does it take? Well, it takes 500 heartbeat points that were needed, and so all the work that we've done over the years were actually helping us to accumulate these points that were needed. And a minimum of 260 heartbeats is required for the training and the placement of the AEDs in the community. A minimum of 60 for first responders with AED-equipped vehicles, that's within the Wilmer city of and the county. And I'll mention, too, that we're designating the city of Wilmer, and the county is also being designated separately, so it's a Heart Safe Community and a Heart Safe County as well. And there's not as many counties being designated as there are cities, from what we're finding out from our friends from Alina. And then, of course, other heartbeats that are attained by the advanced care provided by the EMS services with the plans to continue to be a Heart Safe Community by doing ongoing efforts and continuing on with the training and the program that we've started. So our current stats for the city of So our current stats for the city of Wilmer, we have 38 community AEDs placed, 10 law enforcement vehicle AEDs, two fire department AEDs, and of course, the one with the rescue squad that work within the city of Wilmer. Our ambulances have advanced life support, support defibrillators that have AEDs built within them as well. But this gave us a total of 1,860 points, which was more than enough to achieve the designation. We also do the CPR classes that the Wilmer ambulance service does in the community. We teach the classes for the hospital as well on a monthly basis for refreshers. We work with Ridgewater College and the classes that they do, not in competition of, but to work with them to make sure that the programs are being presented to the public. And I know that the community ed and rec does classes as well, so we also help put on 10 public events that did the CPR training as well. So what comes next? Tonight, the community designation of the heart-safe community and the signs being posted, and Bill, I'll have you grab the sign, and we'd like to present that to Mary Annish. We didn't know if we would have a photo op or not here tonight, there is, but we brought a non-reflective sign, so it would work with the photo.
Because we learned the hard way that when you do the photo op with a highly reflective sign, it creates an interesting photo.
It does.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's our privilege...
Thank you very much.
...to present to you this heart-safe community award in recognition for the work that's been done, and these signs, which can be posted coming into the city or wherever you choose to put them, around the city, designating the city of Wilmer as a heart-safe community.
Thank you very much.
We're very pleased to do that this evening.
Thank you, again, thank you for all you've done, appreciate it.
So with the designation, we do have some signs that are being given to us, and we're talking to Holly Wilson, and they're going to go ahead and place them, as well as purchase a couple additional signs to make sure that we have them at all the entrances to the city of Wilmer on the highways. So to maintain our certification, just so you know that the, the work doesn't end here after designation, we want to make sure that we continue our education and our AED training. We want to make sure that we're putting the information that we're doing into a database. It's a national database that'll count the number of AEDs that we're placing, where they're being located, and it'll help us make sure that when we have businesses that come to town, whether that's through the work that we do, whether that's through the chamber, or however we want to work that out, that we let them know that there's a, a plan in place, and that if they're willing to put an AED in their business, we're willing to help them do that and help them get the training that they need for it. And of course, we know that early access to fibrillation, getting to somebody that's in a sudden cardiac arrest quickly with an AED increases their survival tremendously, so it's important that we have these in the, in the community. And of course, we talked about the two free signs that come with the application, and the signs are not very expensive at all, so we're going to get enough to make sure that we're covered, and the county will be doing the same thing. Then we can determine if we want, as a city, to do anything more for recognition, and I could certainly be happy to work with the city staff on making that happen if they see the need for that. And just so you know, for liability reasons, if a citizen does perform CPR in the community, they're governed, covered under the good Samaritan law, so we want to make sure that when we're doing our education with the folks that are out there, that they know that they can stop and help, it is appropriate to do so, and if nothing more than just calling 911 is done, then they've been covered under that good Samaritan law. For those of us that respond professionally and are paid to do that, we are covered under different liabilities, but we want to make sure that folks that are out there know that they can use these pieces of, of equipment. They don't necessarily need to be trained on the use of them. It's good to have the training, but they're similar to a fire extinguisher in that content, that they are placed in public areas and can be used like that. So in conclusion, by becoming a heart-safe community and, and the work that we've done, we are working together as a community in the promotion of heart health, sudden cardiac arrest awareness, promote and assist businesses, churches, in obtaining AED units and training on them, and to celebrate another way to come together in a positive way, which I've heard Mary Annish say in the past. So coming together and working together in a positive way is another way that we can do this for the city, and again, in the county as well. So I'll take any questions that you have, otherwise I appreciate the time tonight to come out and, and do this.
Do we have questions? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation, and thanks for the certificate and the award. You know, I took CPR classes, oh man, long time going to military, and I know a lot has changed. Could you just brief me and the public on, when you don't have the device? Just a brief explanation.
About what's changed?
CPR.
Well, you know, I think the biggest change and the, the one thing that people wonder about the most is, do I still need to give mouth-to-mouth resuscitation to somebody that's not breathing? And if their heart isn't beating, what do I need to do? And really, for the lay public, what we're telling people and what we're training folks to do is just chest compressions. That's not the mouth-to-mouth breathing that we used to talk about having to do, and I think that's probably the one thing that most people feared the most about having to make that contact. And what we're finding out through the, the science of the American Heart Association is that the circulation of the blood flow is far more important than the oxygen flow because the blood itself holds on to that oxygen much longer than we had initially anticipated. And by circulating it throughout the body, it's doing what's, what is needed to get the oxygen and the blood flow to the system. So that's what, probably the biggest change is, and what's helping us maybe, in a certain extent, have more people learn or want to learn more about how to do CPR.
Just by chance, last night I was watching the news, and I saw that the police department and fire department were giving CPR to a dog in Minneapolis last night, a dog ended up dying, but they did have a mouth-to-mouth device for the dog.
We actually have a device, too, that I carry in my, my vehicle in case we have to, to do that. It's amazing, and I've got animals, too, you get quite attached to them, and, and families do want you to do everything possible for those family members as well, whether that be the fire department that arrives on scene or the EMS workers that might be there as well.
Once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair. If I can add a, just a couple of brief comments. In recent years, there's been a, a revolution that's occurred in how we do cardiopulmonary resuscitation of patients. There were breakthroughs in the science of what goes on inside the chest when we're doing chest compressions. So how we do them has changed a little bit, and I'm not going to go into a whole lecture here on how to perform chest compressions. But in communities that have a, a well-developed system with, and engaged, informed, and, and a public that's willing to be involved and to get, you know, to perform CPR, that has first responders that have the equipment and the training, that has advanced life support, that is a hospital with an excellent emergency department to deliver advanced care, we've seen the survival rate from sudden cardiac arrest go from the national average of around 5% to up to 20 to 25% in communities that are able to implement this. So there's a profound effect that this can have for the citizens of the community. The city of Wilmer is the 10th community in the state of Minnesota to receive this designation. So this is not a common designation yet throughout the state, so you should be very proud around that, and you should be equally proud of the ambulance service and public safety functions and the hospital in this community for the care that it's able to provide to your communities.
Thank you again for coming, thank you very much. This time, we'll move into the, is there anyone that is scheduled to speak?
There is no one scheduled to speak.
Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There is someone in the back for item 16, if you care to shift the agenda.
I think we can do that. We can do that. Consideration of the 3.2 malt liquor license? Would you come up to the microphone? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the current owners of the Hoja Incorporated, doing business as Hoja Restaurant, is located at 1704 First Street South, which is the old Wendy's, and they have applied for a 3.2% liquor license, and the Wilmer Police Department has completed the background check of the manager, Yang Lee. That's a young lady, and her criminal history is clear and favorable, and so, following the report from the police department, their memo to me, it is staff recommendation that we grant Hoja Restaurant a 3.2% malt liquor license, getting them in line with the fiscal year that will end April 25, 2013. It is staff's recommendation to have a motion on a roll call vote to approve that license.
So move.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the license for a 3.2 malt liquor license for the Hoja Restaurant on First Street. Is there a discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries. Thank you. Oh, he's got a different. Well, he came on the mowing charges. Oh, this is for the mowing charges.
Well, where were we on the mowing? Isn't that interesting? Which address, Mr. Mayor?
Hawaii. 113 Hawaii Street. That has already been...
I'm trying to think of which one we, where that one is. Is it next to Havana? So I'm...
Yeah.
Is Hawaii next to Havana? I'm not sure where it's...
Well, in, in Wilmer it is.
In Wilmer? Okay, we're getting, making progress. What'd he say?
We just gave you a look. Did you want to see this?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'll have to find this here to give you the facts. It's kind of out of order, isn't it?
It is.
Since the hearing's closed, but, oh, that's a classic.
But I'm not sure if... Speak English.
Okay.
This was the one, this was just in August, the notice, the letter, so this would be actually for collection. I mean, if he pays it, then we don't have it next year. It's a 2012.
Oh, that's not in the hearing. He's in the hearing, though, too, if it's Waylon, see that?
Yeah, he's in the hearing.
It is in the, it is in the...
Is that again? Is this August of 2012? Our cutoff is July 31.
This is dated the 20th day of August, 2012.
That's the second one coming to happen. That problem's a year down the road.
No, I see 113 on there.
It says that the hearing is on the 4th day of September, 2012.
Oh, that's his notice that I'm having here. So I was trying to find when we mowed it, and I don't seem to have a document behind this of that date of mowing. So yes, this is about the fifth one down for $118.11. And I can't give you any facts as to the date we mowed it, like the last one, I don't mind.
Did you just recently purchase the property? Same thing.
In May.
That's why. It, it's the same thing, same thing we had with Mr. Graves.
Yep, it's a standard timing. If they don't call city hall to get our billing, and only call the utilities, they just have the utility payment.
And once again, it's against the property and not the previous owner. It's totally against the property.
How do we explain this to this young man?
Well, the bottom line is, I guess the hearing is over, although he was here, but if it's consistent with the testimony you've heard earlier, no action has changed. So the, that bill, because it's unpaid, will be certified for collection, it'll be split in half, half of it on each portion of the tax they must pay in 2013.
Do you understand?
It's part, because you brought the property, this comes with it. Yeah, but it's against the property. So when you buy the property, that charge comes with it. It's on the property itself.
If he can bring them to city hall, would that help?
If you, if you would like to come to the, it is a, it is a charge that you are going to have to pay. It, it is with the property, and it is unfortunate that you purchased the property and did not know that, but it is with the property, and it is now assigned to your property and will be collected that way.
Thank you. Okay, Kevin, I think we went through the liquor license.
It should be on YouTube, by the way.
No comment anymore on that one. He's from the other restaurant, by the way, so, he is Waylon, so I do remember him now.
Should we go into the finance committee report?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was public comment, and there were no, no one there to speak to our committee or ask questions of us. The second one, second item, had to do with our investment policy and portfolio. Clerk Halliday explained to the committee that the U.S. Treasury will be phasing out Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac instruments as viable options for local government investment purposes. This will prevent city staff from complying with the 40% diversification rule as stated in the investment policy. As the U.S. government continues to overhaul housing lending systems, diversification options will dwindle. In the city's current investment policy, section 11.0, diversification states, the city will diversify its investments by security type and institution. No more than 40% of the city's total deposits will be invested in a single security type or with a single financial institution or broker-dealer on the day of purchase. It is staff's recommendation that the 40% limitation by institution or broker-dealer should remain in the policy, but the 40% limitation by single security type should be removed due to the shortage of investment options. It was noted that diversification by security type will still be pursued to the extent possible. This took us a while to, to get our, to get our arms around it, but after a lot of discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution amending the investment policy by deleting the following language, quote, "No more than 40% of the city's total deposits will be invested in a single security type," end quote.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution amending the investment policy by deleting the following language, "No more than 40% of the city's total deposits will be invested in a single security type." Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Also, as part of our discussion on the investment portfolio, we looked at, at balances over the last 10 years, as well as the interest and dividends earned each year. That wasn't too surprising, they've gone down. That was for information only. The third item was the EDC proposed tax levy. Mr. Renquist, the EDC executive director, reviewed the EDC 2013...
Mr. Rehnquist, the EDC Executive Director, reviewed the EDC 2013 budget with us. Anticipated revenue for 2013 includes the county tax levy of $455,000, which has not changed in the past four years, plus $11,603 in miscellaneous revenue. The EDC is also proposing to utilize $40,104 from their reserves as a funding source. The overall budgeted expenditures remain flat for 2013, in total, $506,707. Mr. Rehnquist stated that any salary increase for the EDC will be the blended rate of approved city and county salary increases. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a motion approving the EDC 2013 budget and tax levy as proposed.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the EDC 2013 budget and tax levy as proposed. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rehnquist is here. If councilmembers have any questions, I'm sure he would be happy to, to answer those.
It's our questions. Do you have any comments? Less than three minutes. We have a motion on the table approving, we have a motion and a second approving the EDC 2013 budget and tax levy as proposed. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
The next item was a review of some prior year's budget and staffing reductions. Staff reviewed actions that the city of Wilmere has taken since it began experiencing local government aid reductions in 2009. Since 2008, staffing has been reduced by 7.2 FTEs across the organization. In addition, there are currently five vacant positions for which the city is in the process of filling, too. Those are the wastewater treatment operator and the fire chief, fire marshal. Since 2009, the city has deferred $600,000 in capital expenditures. In 2012, the city analyzed its fleet and reduced the number of vehicles and equipment by 15, resulting in a one-time savings of $281,652. The city faces many challenges with this aging infrastructure and is now trying to rebuild a five-year capital improvement program, beginning in 2013, with a proposal to transfer $1.8 million from the general fund to capital reserve to start catching up on our needs. Also, in 2013, the city has proposed reductions in overtime for police and public works, and some reductions in seasonal employees, and some reductions in funding to community groups to offset other increased costs. This was taken for information only, but I think it's a very important piece that, that we need to remember, that we, we haven't been standing pat, and we have been making reductions to compensate for our losses of income. The fifth item was the mayor's proposed 2013 budget proposed and proposed levy. Staff reviewed with us the tax levy included in the mayor's proposed 2013 budget. Under the mayor's proposal, the property tax levy would increase to $4,232,734, with the entire levy increase in the amount of $240,000 designated for public works, infrastructure. Information was provided on the impact that that $240,000 will have on street projects. It was, it was noted that the effect on property owners would equate to an approximate increase of $25.47 per year on a $115,000 home. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution setting the preliminary 2013 City of Wilmere property tax levy at $4,232,734 and scheduling the public hearing on the 2013 proposed budget for December 3, 2012.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution setting the preliminary 2013 City of Wilmere property tax levy at $4,232,734 and scheduling the public hearing on the 2013 proposed budget for December 3, 2012. Is there any discussion? I have a question for our Finance Director. Could you do a better job than what this paragraph said, stated in explaining where that levy is going and why it's being proposed? Did I say that properly?
Are you referring to the $240,000, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. $240,000 levy.
I guess I would defer to the city administrator as far as maybe explaining that. It's my understanding that you are proposing to allocate that to overlaying of the street program.
In the first year, am I correct?
It is for 2013, proposed to be used in the streets program. The $240,000 will essentially allow, will allow us to do an additional mile of overlay in 2013.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to introduce the resolution setting the preliminary. I read that. Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a comment on that, just for the general public. This is a preliminary levy, and it can be lowered, but we cannot raise it.
That's true.
Honor before December 13th. Correct?
Honor before when?
December 3rd. 3rd, excuse me, December 3rd.
December 3rd is the hearing, and Councilmember Christiansen is correct. This is a preliminary levy, and this is the maximum levy that the city can do now for the, for 2013. You, the city council certainly throughout the budget process has the option to lower that levy.
And the public hearing has been set for December 3.
That is correct.
Okay, the next item was a report. We looked at the July 31 Rice Trust report, and that was for information only. Our final item was some future agenda items, and I want to highlight that just a little bit. On September 10, we're going to have a full council workshop. It will be here at 4:45, and we're going to talk about community groups, what they had asked for and what they were funded at, and in the capital improvement program will also be discussed. And then we'll get into the regular Finance Committee will, will be meeting, and one of the items of the West Central Industries has requested some conduit financing. And just for your information, we're going to talk about fund balances September 24. Mr. Mayor, that concluded the business of the Finance Committee, unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded filed the minutes of the Finance Committee dated August 27, 2012. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Public Works Safety Committee, Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda was our improvements at the airport, and Jared Vogt from Bolton and Mink was at our meeting, and he presented the results of the bid opening that was held on August 9 for those improvements, which included crack ceiling and turf reestablishment. There was only one bidder, and that bid was at $223,495, and the engineer's estimate was $190,500. There were a number of other plan holders, and Mr. Vogt contacted those plan holders after the bid opening, and those additional plan holders indicated that due to time constraints, they weren't confident the work could be completed within the outlined time. And since there was only one bid received, the recommendation from Mr. Vogt is, and from our Public Works Director, Holly Wilson, was that we reject the bid and re-advertise. So I would move to reject the bid of interstate improvement from Faribault, Minnesota for the airport project.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to reject the bid of interstate improvement of Faribault, Minnesota for the airport project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Mr. Vogt then proposed to the committee that the project be divided into two bids, one for the restoration of the turf runway with seating and fertilizing, and the other one for the crack ceiling and joint repair on the runway and the taxiways and other areas around buildings. And then have an allowance that the project could be completed by May 20, 2013. And the hopes are that the city would receive better bid prices as contractors that specialize in one or the other can bid as a general contractor. The improvements are funded through the state at the amount of 70 percent and from local funds, 30 percent, and there was a $45,000 item budgeted in the 2012 capital improvements for this. So I would introduce a resolution to approve the plans and specs for the airport improvements and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened September 20, 2012.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the plans and specifications for the airport improvements and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened September 20, 2012. Is there any discussion? Councilman Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To be completed by May 20, 2013, what impact will that have on the use of the airport, the runways?
I don't know if that would have any different impact on the use. I don't know. Holly, maybe?
The main paved runway would still be able to be used until the project is under construction. There would be minimal interference with that. The grass runway will more than likely remain closed because of the, the ride that the pilots get when they land on it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know to what extent it's cracked? I mean, that they need to be filled, because winter's coming, and, you know, if we have a lot of moisture and it goes into cracks, it's going to worsen the problem next year. I really had hoped that it'd get done this year. Is it really, really bad, or is it just a maintenance thing that's scheduled for every so many years?
Because they did review all the cracks and did an assessment of the condition of the runway, so I'll let Jared from Bolton and Mink answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We, actually, we've identified all the cracks out at the airport, including the runways, the taxiways, the access roadways. This is a standard maintenance procedure. There's approximately, based on our estimates, somewhere in their neighborhood of 50,000 linear feet of cracks to be filled out there between the runways, the blast pads, the taxiways, things of that nature. So I'm anticipating, and I can't speak for the contractors, but I actually just had a couple call me today asking when this is going to be rebid, and I said, well, at this point, it's, hasn't been formally adopted by the council, but indicated the September 20 date, and there are some contractors that are, that are looking at trying to get a portion of it done this year. Some have indicated that next spring would be better for them. So in terms of, of losing the pavement structure, there's not going to be a real loss if we wait over the winter. Obviously, we want to get them sealed up as soon as possible. The main concern here is, is getting the bids let before the end of 2012.
Is it, you said it's a part of a maintenance schedule. Is that something they look at every two to four years, five or six years, or how often do they look at it for crack ceiling? Or is it just go out and check and say, oh, we better do this?
Well, actually, last, last year, MINDO did complete a pavement evaluation, which is something that they do on most, most airports throughout the state. They rated the pavements. They identified certain areas that were cracked, some that weren't. They didn't give us a really good, comprehensive, linear footage of the cracks out there. But typically, it's, it's a good thing to review at least every, at least take a look at it every year, and maybe a hard look every five, depending on, and there's a rule of thumb for seal coating streets, which is different than airports, but it's, it's a really good thing to keep an eye on every year, because you're right, as moisture gets into the pavement, it just deteriorates it very quickly.
Okay, hopefully, we can get some of it done this year. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Next item was a request to review the barking dog ordinance, and the current ordinance was developed in 2001. Right now, a violation, when it exists, if, if the dog habitually barks, bays, howls for at least three minutes with less than one minute of interruption and must be audible outside of the premises. The first and second violation, the owner has typically issued a warning. Third time, they must appear in court. Committee discussed the ordinance briefly, and Chief Weifels stated he will look into it further to see if any other similar ordinances can be found that offer improvements regarding the handling of barking dog issues. Chief Weifels will bring the findings back before the committee at a later date, so this was for information only.
Do you have a question for Chief Weifels?
What's that?
I do have a question for Chief Weifels. Chief Weifels, when might that later date be?
I had good intentions to bring it to the next Public Works, Public Safety meeting.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item, Public Works Director Wilson presented a draft of an illicit discharge in stormwater and connection stormwater ordinance for committee consideration. An ordinance is required by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency as part of the city's future compliance with the MS4 permit. The ordinance mostly pertains to discharge into catch stations and the gutter. Staff drafted the proposed ordinance from other examples, including one provided from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Staff's recommendation is to refer the proposed ordinance to our city attorney for review prior to holding a hearing. So there was a motion made, seconded and passed to do that, and I would so move.
Second.
Is there a motion needed for that?
Probably isn't needed, but.
It's not, I mean, it's not, it's not needed, but, I mean, it's been made, so it can simply be voted upon.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to refer the ordinance to the city attorney for review. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Next item was an application for a fall permit from Mr. Frank Johannes to keep three chickens at 801 Southwest 5th Street. Chief Weifels recommended denying the permit based on issues that have already risen. Mr. Johannes has knowingly violated the city ordinance by raising chickens without the permit and has been issued a citation to appear in court on the matter. The citation was prompted by a citizen complaining of noisy roosters at the residence, and no fall permit was issued. So I would move to deny the request for a fall permit at 801 Southwest 5th Street.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to deny the request for a fall permit at 801 Southwest 5th Street. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
That's the end of the minutes, Mr. Mayor. I will move to file the minutes. If there's questions, we'll certainly try and take care of them.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for August 28. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We have a Community Development Committee report for August 30th from Councilman Docken.
And Labor, next.
Labor is, Steve, Steve is gone. Who, Tim, are you vice chair?
I can read the Labor minutes.
Okay, would you like to do the Labor Relations Committee report for August 29th?
That would be fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Labor Relations Committee met on Wednesday, August 29th, 2012, in conference room one at the City Office Building. First item was for public comment, but no one was present for any public comment at that meeting. Item number two was closure of the meeting relative to arbitration award with the LELS Union. Moved the closure was based on the attorney-client privilege, which is an exception to the open meeting statute. And at 4:46, a motion was made to go into closed session pursuant to statute, and the exception noted, already noted, and a motion was made and seconded and carried. Meeting was closed also for contract negotiation strategies relative to the pending negotiations with Union the city hasn't settled with yet, and that was a closed session also relative to discussion of contract negotiation strategies. Session was opened at 5:40, and at that time, City Clerk Kevin Halliday and City Assessor Pat Erickson joined the meeting. Item number five was dealt with assessing department vacancy. Mr. Halliday reviewed the state requirements for conducting property assessments and the work he had done on alternatives to filling the vacancy. Mr. Halliday stated that partnership with county was not viable at this time, and he had contacted private assessors also to see if they had any interest, but they had indicated they were not interested in obtaining the necessary certifications that would be required to conduct mass appraisals for the city. Mr. Halliday recommended that the city post a position internally and try to promote someone within the organization and then not fill that subsequent open position. Mr. Halliday also stated that in 2013, the seasonal clerical position for assessing would be eliminated. If promoting from within was not viable, Mr. Halliday stated that he would return to the committee with some other options, such as reductions in services. In response to a question from Chairman Ammon regarding changes in assessing, Mrs. Erickson stated that over the years, it has become more complex and the desire of citizens to have a better product has increased the demands on staff. Motion was made, seconded and passed to approve a promotion within and a restructuring of any subsequent vacancy, and I would introduce that motion at this time.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve a promotion from within and a restructuring of any subsequent vacancy. Is there any discussion? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, have you looked at maybe contracting with township assessors or small city assessors?
No, we haven't. We did talk a little bit about it because when we, long ago, when we had Sue Torrisson, we went and solicited her, more or less. There was about eight townships using those. The last time we heard, there was two or three and maybe none, so we didn't really investigate that so much. But that's a little bit more like the private side and, well, I guess it wouldn't be if they're already done. They've had the, now, four levels of the Board of Assessing criteria, but do you know that there are some that exist? They're pretty limited species these days.
I know there's some in Redwood Falls and over in Montevideo that do township assessing. So there's some over Meeker County. I mean, if you hire someone within, it's going to take a year or two to get up to speed.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that an option we can pursue? I mean, relative to maybe not getting anybody within or...
Well, that would be, I suppose, a RFP process if we wanted to try to do that, but if we're, I mean, this is our lower threshold. We're comparing it to a lower threshold. It starts off as a range four, which is about $13 an hour, and then if they get that first level of Board of Assessing certification from the state of Minnesota, then it's a range five, but even that is maybe like $15.40 an hour, somewhere like that. So it may be tough to pull somebody, and the reason we didn't go very far is there's none that we really knew of in Candy High County. The county is picking up and doing those townships, so to pull someone off from a different city coming in, I mean, you could consider it, but it sounds like a kind of a remote outside chance, and so we haven't opened anything up at this point. It's in, our first step was internal, so...
If that's a desire of the council to explore, that we can, we could do those simultaneously. We can post a position internally and we could investigate if that's a viable alternative for us.
Is there further discussion?
Other than, I think maybe it should be explored.
We can do that, Councilmember.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item six was a miscellaneous item for information only. City Administrator Stevens distributed a report on overtime to date from the police, fire, and public works departments, as requested previously in the interest of time. Discussion and, discussion was saved, that discussion was saved for a future meeting. And that would conclude the minutes, Mr. Mayor, and if there are no questions, I would move to file the same.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of a Labor Relations Committee report for August 29th, 2012. Is there any discussion on that? Councilman Reese.
Mr. Mayor, just in regards to replacing and in vacant positions, and we've got a number of them right now. One of them that's still kind of hanging in limbo, I believe, is our surveyor position in the engineering department, right?
That is correct. The survey, the engineering tech position is still vacant. We did a request for proposals to see about the, you know, private cost of that. We've gotten those requests for proposals back. I'm not prepared to discuss those at this time.
No, and that's okay. I'm just glad that we're moving ahead with the assessing position and the earlier agreed to wastewater operator position. And, you know, when it comes to the question of hiring replacements for vacant positions, we do need to do what we did, and that's evaluate carefully the need and also look for opportunities to cooperate with other local governments in order to, or governmental entities in order to, as Councilmember Ammon said, I don't know, probably a month ago, to fulfill our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Wilmer. We still have to recognize that some of these responsibilities to the taxpayer of Wilmer. However, we have to recognize that some of these positions, as staff has pointed out, are specialized positions, and they're positions that require abilities and expertise in order to do the job, which we've now found with the research which was requested by the city council and done by staff in reference to the open position in the assessing department. And, you know, there's skills and if you, we've got a lot of people that are skilled that work for the city now. And, you know, if you look at, maybe you recall a television commercial. I don't even know what it's for. I don't remember. I think it's for trading or investing, but the guy's on the cell phone, and he's got a butter knife at his chest, and the doctor says, it's easy, just cut between the third and fourth clavicle. Well, the announcer goes on to make the point, you wouldn't want to operate on yourself, and why would you be so foolish as to not go to the experts? Like I said, the city of Wilmer has a number of experts working for it, experts who work at City Hall and in law enforcement as a supervisor, in the public works, or at the wastewater treatment facility, the fire station. I could go on, but in each and every department within the city, we have experts. And going way back, when I was on the, when I was chair of the Labor Relations, I always encouraged our previous city administrator, when we were looking at different things and operations, I said, go talk to the people that are doing the job, because they're the experts. They know what happens when you do something. I mean, even if it's just something to do with the storm sewer, or it's something to do with the sewers or the wastewater treatment plant, go find out what it is. These people know their job, and they're people who want to do the best for the city. And the city council's a body of elected officials, and we set policy, and that's it. After policy is set, the city council needs to let the experts do the job. Continually questioning decisions and recommendations made by our city administrator and our department heads is, to me, demeaning. And ask yourself, if in my work, in most every move taken or decision made or recommendation, and it's looked down upon, how would I feel about myself? Would I feel that I'm being treated with dignity and respect? Would I feel appreciated? If not, why would I continue working for someone that doesn't respect me or my work? If there's a legitimate reason to question the actions of a department head, we should, but we should find out why that decision was made. And in the past, I've been upset by some such decisions that have been made by staff. And I haven't done it since Charlene's been here as city administrator. But when I was upset, I would go in and I'd talk to the city administrator, and I would be very upset, and he would have to calm me down. And I would find out the reasoning for the decision or the action that was taken. And I think we need to do that as city council people, city council members. I feel that our department heads are experts, and so are our supervisors and our employees under those supervisors. We've got good people working for the city. They know their jobs much better than any one of us sitting at this table. The city council and the mayor all voted to hire city administrator Charlene Stevens immediately after interview. And she's a professional, and we all recognized that in her first interview. And prior to her first interview, it was the intention for us to hold two interviews with the top candidates, and we didn't do that, for it was very clear to every one of us that Charlene was and is the person for the job of the city of Wilmer, city administrator. She's a professional, and she can help the city council, mayor, to reduce conflict and get things done. And we have way too much of the former and not so much of the latter. The council's repeatedly told that the world is changing, that there's a new norm, and as the world becomes more complex, the benefits of a trained professional who understands budgeting, policy management, risk mitigation, strategic visioning, and I could go on there too, but visioning that brings to the city of Wilmer the opportunity for growth and appropriate financial moves and actions. Administrator Stevens has the professional management skills the city of Wilmer needs, and by not, by allowing her to do her job, in my mind, adds great value. And the value in having a professional city administrator brings a high-level efficiency as it relates to city management, city growth. I believe a very large percentage of the employees of the city of Wilmer perform their work with the best interest of the city overall in mind, and I also believe that Administrator Stevens has a true vision of where the city needs to go and how to get there. We, the city council and mayor, simply need to start listening. So I'm very pleased that we're moving ahead. We just need to leave the administration to the administrators.
Thank you, Councilman, for your comments. I might just add, if I may, the, that decision to delay the hiring of three additional people for vacancies in our staff is doing exactly what it was meant to do. We're looking at all the options and seeing where our options lie. I would, that would be my comment on that. Are there any other comments? We'll vote to file the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That's, that carries, motion carries. Now we'll head into the Community Development Committee report. Councilman Docken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are the minutes of Thursday, August 30th, Community Development Committee meeting. There were no public comments offered at this meeting. Item number two was the animal ordinance. It is a motion. We reviewed, the committee reviewed the memorandum prepared by the city attorney, Mr. Scott, regarding the regulation of animals in the city. Discussion focused on whether or not chickens should be allowed in residential areas and on placing limits on the number of animals allowed. It was a consensus of the committee that chickens not be allowed in residential areas, but still be allowed in agricultural and industrial areas. Also, that the number of rabbits allowed be reduced to six per property and pigeons reduced to 30 per property. It was also agreed that premises currently licensed for chickens will be allowed to retain the chickens until the current license expires. And I just wanted, before we, before I make the motion, I just wanted to go over the work done by Mr. Scott and Mr. Hood. Some of the data that we looked at, and we looked at each area independently, they talk about on page two, the lack of objective standards in the ordinance has caused confusion among city staff and the council in considering permit applications thereunder. Under analysis, it indicates that the council has broad authority to regulate animals by adopting an ordinance under their policing power. The conclusion and recommendation was that the council has wide discretion to determine the needs of the city and regulate animals in any manner it chooses to serve the city's need, so long as it does not do so arbitrarily or unreasonably. However, the current ordinance lacks objective standards necessary for a fair and effective permitting scheme and needs to be updated. So the motion, Mr. Mayor, was that, and I will move the, this recommendation, that the proposed changes be made to the draft ordinance and that the city attorney be directed to prepare a new ordinance for a hearing. And do we have a date on that hearing?
Not until we would see an ordinance.
No, the ordinance must first be drafted, and then we'll determine the date of the hearing.
Okay, very good. So I would move that, that the proposed changes be made to the draft ordinance and the city attorney be directed to prepare a new ordinance for a hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded that the proposed changes be made to the draft ordinance and that the city attorney be directed to prepare a new ordinance for the hearing be determined. Discussion. Councilman Reese.
I, the licenses are for a year, right?
In the proposed ordinance change, there will no longer be... In the proposed ordinance change, there will no longer be a license.
I understand that, but the current ones are, were issued for one year.
That is correct.
Okay.
I mean, and each one has been issued at the date, so there's not, not a calendar year. They're each on their own year.
And it's hard not to get exacting on some of this, of my questions. Not allowed in residential areas, but allowed in agricultural, industrial areas. So, there's one license that we've had for many, many years. I assume that that's one of those areas?
Correct. Correct. That is, that is not located in a, in a residential area.
Okay.
The one on the west side of town, yeah?
Yes.
Do we know the zoning district?
It's an industrial.
It's industrial, okay. And I don't know if we got any licenses in this area, but we've got some residential in our industrial park area. Is that, is, where those houses are, is that residential, or is that industrial? That would be industrial, so they could actually apply for one if they lived out there. All right. I just wanted to understand. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Item number three is a deferred issue and it dealt with neighborhood issues. Item number four, cleanup, and this was for information only. It was noted that there was 6,000 in this, in, 6,000 is the proposed 2013 budget to be used by the city to partner in a community cleanup effort. It is anticipated that the city will again work with Lakeland Broadcasting staff to plan and, for and carry out the, the event. The last item miscellaneous was a motion. Councilmember Aman asked the committee to consider several matters. He first suggested that the city required developers to give assurances to protect taxpayers in projects with city financial participation. He recommended that the city be able to withhold financial participation if the project reaches a specific, a specified level of profitability. Councilmember Aman also proposed that boards and commissions and groups or agencies receiving city financial assistance be required to adopt a conflict of interest policy. The committee discussed the two matters before offering the following motion, and the motion was to refer the developer assurance and conflict of interest issues to staff for follow-up, and I would move that recommendation.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to refer the developer assurance and conflict of interest issues to staff for follow-up. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
And then also, Councilmember Christiansen asked staff to invite the county sanitarian to a future meeting to explain what he and his department do. Unless there are further items to come, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for August 30th. Is there any discussion? I have a question for our city attorney. What exactly did we ask the city attorney to do under item number two?
To draft an ordinance.
Draft the ordinance.
To draft the revised ordinance.
Do we know what the revised ordinance is?
It is essentially the same ordinance that has been proposed with the changes to eliminate chickens as a permitted animal in residential areas, and to reduce the number of rabbits allowed to, from the proposed number down to six per property and pigeons to thirty per property.
Was that your intent, Councilman?
Yes, that was what.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Council meeting dates, committee meeting dates?
There is an item number 14, Mills Properties preliminary plat.
Did I forget?
Fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Okay, then we have to, I want to adjourn too fast. Consideration of.
You want to get out of here, huh?
Preliminary plat, Bruce, would you explain the Mills Properties plat to us, please?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, the Mills second edition plat is a plat submitted by the Mills Companies. It's for the property directly north of the Ford dealership on South First Street. They are proposing to sub, to subdivide a portion of that property into three additional lots to provide a building site for the Mills Auto Center, which will be the relocated Toyota, Nissan, and General Motors dealership. The planning commission approved the preliminary plat with two conditions regarding a water valve shut-off that was required, and also that there be an access easement agreement in place prior to the final plat being filed. It's a recommendation of staff that the council approve the preliminary plat with those same two conditions.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the preliminary plat with the planning commission conditions on it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Could you explain the second plat to us?
There's only one plat. The next item is the charter commission nomination.
Sorry, consideration of Richard Halterman to the charter commission. Kevin, would you speak to that, please?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, at the last charter commission meeting, I believe it was August 13th, Charter Commissioner Bob Bonowitz did tender his resignation, and it was accepted by the charter commission. The letter of resignation was advanced to the chief judge at the district court, which is now Judge Spilseth. The statutory process is for either the charter commission or the city council, or both, to submit some names to the chief judge, leaving it to the chief judge to determine which nominee to appoint. Mayor Yanis has informed us that he has talked with Richard Halterman, and he is just advancing that name for your consideration, or if you have your own names, they can be advanced also. You need to vote on a nomination, second it, and get a majority vote, and then our city attorney needs to petition the district court with your nomination, if you have a name. So with that, Mayor Yanis, I guess in a further conversation, I'll add, the mayor and the chairman of the charter commission have discussed that they may both have names so that, the chairman was hoping that the council's name, even if they come to a conclusion on a nomination, wouldn't be advanced ahead of their next meeting, and they'll be petitioned together. So there'll be a slight delay, should you so choose to cooperate with the charter commission.
If I would like to add is that the nomination really means, does not mean that he has been placed on the charter commission.
Absolutely not. The chief judge can pick out a John Smith from, as long as they're a citizen by our criteria in the committee, but.
Thank you.
It's in his full capacity. We're just, you're, the council is just nominating.
Councilman Anderson?
I'd move the nomination of Richard Halterman to the charter commission.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the nomination of Richard Halterman to the, to be released to the courts?
To be submitted.
To be submitted, to be petitioned to the court, I guess.
To be petitioned to the courts. Is there any discussion?
Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, I wanted to understand your last statement. You said the charter commission, or the chair, has got another name to submit, and they didn't want us to submit it until their next meeting? Is that, was that what you stated?
To go in together, if they come up with names too. Both parties can submit names rather than compete, rather cooperate.
So are we circumventing the process by doing this, or?
You can do any action. You can direct the attorney to petition tomorrow.
Okay.
Or you can direct him to hold off until, it's about a month away before they meet.
So basically, they don't want us to submit the name until?
Till they meet, and if they have any name to consider.
Okay, and we're agreeing to that? Is that part of this motion?
You'd have to ask the motion maker.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to understand that for.
Have we got a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded for the nomination of Richard Halterman to, how did you put that?
Be submitted.
Be submitted to the courts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Now we go into the council committee dates. Tim, do you know, is there a labor committee meeting?
There is not one scheduled at this time. I'll be talking with Councilmember Aman when he's back in town.
Councilman Reese?
There will be a public works safety meeting next Tuesday, whatever the date is. I don't have a calendar.
September 11th.
11th. All right. 4:45.
Councilman Anderson?
Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 10th, 4:45. That'll be a council workshop, and that will be held here.
4:45 here?
Yes.
And Councilman Doc?
Community Development, 13th of September, 4:45, conference room number one in the city office building.
Okay, thank you. Under miscellaneous, the only miscellaneous that I have would be to call on our city administrator.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to recognize Holly Wilson as our public works director. This is her last meeting with the city council. She has taken a new position with Pine City, Minnesota, as city administrator, and we certainly wish her well in that endeavor and thank her for her years of service to the city of Wilmer.
And I think we should give her all a big hand for what she's done. Thank you. I will introduce the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
I need to be excused from the next council meeting.
What? Okay, next council meeting. Okay? That's right, and then on the, what is it, the 24th, we have the finance meeting?
Yeah, I'll be back on the 24th. I'll just miss the next council meeting.
Any other miscellaneous? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Yep.
We are adjourned.